Jim, I'm WarSister. I'll start with the public comment period thing. We've got to change your order. The last meeting was, I think it was a disaster when I came to call the comment. You got to me, and then after I made my public comment, and what was significant about my comment was you had this solicitor building for work outside the township, two WarSister township. You stopped public comment and went into the meeting. And then had public comment at the end. Yeah. Defeats the whole purpose of all the comment. So, we've got to change. I would change it back to the way it was, or compromise and do one at the end and one at the end. It's just not working, not fair, doesn't make sense. I think you have to change it. I have a question for you. At the end of the last meeting, I have known, why did the solicitor lie to the public about his announcement of the executive session?
Again, it's a comment period, I reject the notion that he lied.
Well, I again, I again, I hope you're out. As part of his executive session announcement, which was, by the way, a lot of issue of sunshine. He said that I brought nine district justice actions. No, I'm sorry, twelve district justice actions, which really are sixteen district justice actions. Each, you guys were responsible for 2,000 dollars for each action. And then, he says, Dr. Mullin brought nine court of common case actions against the board. Do you have any verification about that?
Again, it's a comment period, I'll just leave what you have beside it.
Okay, well, I did some research. Because I know I did not bring nine court of common case actions against the board, any of which are negative at this point, because you wouldn't be talking about inactive cases in executive session. So, I went to the docket, looked them up. You guys were the ones who brought the actions in the court of common case. And I provided a list of the actions that you brought against, actually, the Office of Urban Records, and some against me as well, and the Office of Urban Records, and the Court of Common Case. You sort of brought the actions against the Office of Urban Records and myself. Because you didn't like the Office of Urban Records agreeing with me. So, can you tell me why he lied?
Again, I reject that it's a lie. I understand your comment.
Well, I provided, I provided the list, Mr. Ryan, and I copied all of you guys on the email. You have the list. The list clearly shows who the plaintiff is and who the defendant is. You guys are the plaintiff in these cases, not me. You're the plaintiff. He misrepresented this to the public. He lied to the public. Now, further, when you announce things, you're supposed to announce the parts, which he didn't do. The docket numbers, which he didn't do. See, why they sunshine it? And if he had done that, we would have found out, you guys would not have held the jury. That's, we went through this with Red Eagle, do you remember Red Eagle? We went through it with Red Eagle. It's not like you guys don't now. You got schooled on Red Eagle, if you remember that situation. So, I'll let you slide again. So, I could have filed another sunshine on that action, again. You guys don't get it. But I'm not going to be lying. I'm not going to take it anymore, I'm not. You guys filed the action in the court of common case. See, you were supposed to look into the sound barrier agreement. Jim, I'm going to add the sound barrier grant, how we lost it.
Again, this is a situation where you're addressing, you're addressing the chairman, and you're making comments, you're not asking questions.
No, Steve said we'll get it.
And then, we'll get back to you then afterwards.
Well, we looked like, once Senator Rafferty, we had the Congress email going back without copying Senator Rafferty's email. It was funny stuff.
We lost it.
We lost the money.
And the minutes of the meeting that we held are not on the website, can you tell me why? Can you tell me why, Eric? Minutes are gone from the special meeting.
Okay, I will check into that. Thank you for your comment.
Can you tell us why we lost it?
I'll give you a couple emails from Senator Rafferty.
We lost 750 grand, can you tell us why?
Again, he said we'd give you the comment email.
You don't want to explain to the public why we lost the 750,000 dollar grant?
Chairman, just, here was a massive grant, township that was a deal with what, Senator Rafferty, because of transition, was working on that deal, and was trying to do money for the Board of Directors, who were kind of turning down money. Well, the money didn't take, did go through, so the Board of Directors sat there for this little pot of money, and eventually just got out.
Senator Rafferty has a different experience. He says you guys can get your paper working. That's what Rafferty said.
I don't hear that.
Okay, that's what Rafferty said. Anyone else on public comment? Mr. Rafferty.
Dan, WarSister. Again, I would like to request that the comment period be moved back to the end of the meeting, as it's been passed. I think that was much more efficient news at the time. And this just gave us a chance to comment on items that are discussed in the meeting that aren't on the agenda. And that happens very frequently. When I even hear many of the board or the staff saying, "Well, it's not on the agenda, but..." And then we really don't have a chance to comment on that. If we need to go back to the old way, or have someone reiterate something again. And again, I can request that this information be available on the website prior to the meeting. So, everyone will have a chance to look at it and review it prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there any other?
I'm being a little more sister. Respectfully request, at this point, change policy regarding public comment. I should continue to say, last meeting, where you said, "We're going to address it." So, that'd be great if you could, I realize it's still a comment section, but you could tell us when you're going to address it, so that we won't have to keep presenting all of this information back to you in the same fashion. My second comment would be, Mr. Mullin indicated that the road, or road park was going to take place soon, and two weeks since then, and it continues to deteriorate, in my opinion. And, I think today, I have not been down that hill as many years today.
Great, thank you, you're welcome. Anyone else? Scott?
I want to first, um...
I'm sorry, if you please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott, this is WarSister. My first comment is to Mr. Mullin. Joe, I don't know, uh...
Again, Scott.
I'm sorry.
Rest of the day.
Oh, I'm sorry, Art. My, uh, my question is regarding the sewer project, the, the saw cuts that are done to install the...
It's a comment.
I'm sorry.
It's a comment.
Okay, my comment is, I would like for Mr. Mullin to, and his staff, to make sure they repaint that. That it is done, Mr. Mullin's an engineer, he's picking up special people, or engineers too. They've made saw cuts, they've come in with, with the, with the, with the, uh... Equipment, and they've torn up the, they've torn up the places where they saw cut. They've done a really crappy job following, following those saw cuts. I don't know if they're going to open over the entire road, streets, or whether they're going to just pave where they tore up. But, they saw cut for precision, so the most good ones paved them. It looks like Alan Allen, I hope that they're, that they're going to do that. I wish that somebody would make sure that that is done. Second thing, the, um, on Route 4, probably a lot of pinots, um, along the perimeter of the, that the, uh, the Eden Park property, they look really bad. There's a lot of dead wood, it looks like nobody has come and elevated those trees in years. It's a focal point of the township, and it looks for the class. So, we have to bid that, but they have to pay three, three quotes. Somebody should look into that, that's just one guy's opinion. The other thing that I want to, you guys to comment on, this is the last time they addressed the board, is, um, is my displeasure for the way these meetings transpire. They're acrimonious, they don't need to be. Art, you don't need to edit. The comment section is our better. You either take comments and don't respond, or you make a Q and A session. It can't be at your discretion, you can't comment on Mr. Gray's comments, but when Dr. Mullins is widely installed, bulletproof class, you can't say, you shouldn't say, "Well, it's a comment session." You can't, you can't use your discretion that way, Art, it has to be one way or another. Everybody has to receive fair and appropriate treatment when it comes to these meetings, I would like to see that. I have not seen that, and it's troubling. And we will get a kick out of sitting there, um, being grilled, and, you know, I'd prefer to see you folks going to meetings more than me, as opposed to a, a subordinated position where you put the taxpayers in a subordinated role, and let them choose to answer their questions if you want. There exists a Q and A session. I can go in, ask Mr. Ryan some specific questions, and you folks like to defer to Mr. Ryan. And Mr. Ryan doesn't have his questions, uh, those answers. So, there exists at present, no plausible way for residents to give their questions answered. Because you folks don't want answering, and it's a comment section only, and Mr. Ryan is not equipped to answer the questions that some of us would like to have answered. So, there remains no practice in place by which taxpayers can have questions answered. I think that is the... Oh, resolutions. This is a five-day sewer resolution. I got it ten minutes before the meeting started. It shouldn't, this is, this is not secret, I mean, there's, there's no reason why this can't be released on your website. So, can you tell me why I have to race through this? This is all legal stuff? It, it requires an hour's worth of, of, of review and digestion? I don't think it's particularly fair, because I said this on the table, five minutes before, I mean, it's over. I mean, how are we supposed to actively comment on this while paying attention to things that may transpire at this meeting prior to this resolution coming up? Could you please...
I understand your, your situation. I will talk with the township manager to see how the process is.
And if this is something that is possible, or at least you want to look into it, maybe you should...
I'll, I'll discuss it, but I'll see what I perceive, sorry, Steve, if there's some way we can...
I would appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? I'm going to move on back to the agenda here. First thing, the agenda, there's the questions to approve, the objectivity first, 2015 minutes, as well as the November 2nd. If you want to take them individually, to the problem, to the...
We don't get it. We want to make a deal.
Sure. Do I have a motion? What we have at Senator's List?
Actually, we have them together.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think we approve as written from November 21st, 2015, and November 2nd, 2015.
All right, comments from the forum in a minute. Okay. Just a minute, Bill. Bill, just a minute, five minutes.
Let me go.
All right, Bill, you go first, and then we'll get you.
Um, Williams, Cash, WarSister. On page five, of the October 10th, I quoted, but I quoted incorrectly. The drainage issue at German Town Pike, that isn't what I spoke about. There's no drainage issue at German Town Pike. The problem was, in my mind, was the problem. The township has, uh, under, under the road drainage pipe that runs parallel with German Town Pike, east to west, replaced and drained, installed correctly, sinking down. But my, my comment, I made it to our township manager, but he never returned the call. My call was about 12 feet of the road for drainage pipe was located, and 12 feet from German Town Pike, now that's a weird guess. Belongs to Montgomery County. So, I guess I did bring this point up, but I certainly weren't talking about drainage. So, the WarSister Township built Montgomery County for 12 feet of road improvement. Because WarSister did, uh, Montgomery County's work for it. So, I think it's only fun for everybody to film for the work we did. Now, that's what I said, I didn't say anything about drainage. But then, my second comment, I was supposed to have said home improvement, contractor safety. That isn't what I said. I talked about water company hook up, they said of my well, hook up to, to water in my German Town Pike, which I paid for. I wasn't talking about safety, I was talking about thievery. And I don't know who exactly did it. The sewer contractor, or water company subcontractor. But things were stolen from my basement, I, my problem is, I'm too honest, I trust people. And you can't trust people, and I, it was a warning to the rest of the people who sort of have sewer lines. Watch the contractors in your basement, if there's two exits, sit on a chair and watch them leave, because they'll steal your line. And a lot of it, if you're done with a five-town book. So, I was trying to warn the residents, but the two comments are wrong. So, anyway, on, uh, Monday, November 2nd, the settlement, the drainage settlement agreement, climate damage, 48 acres, but here's a lot. Would you mind telling the taxpayers how much we're spending? I mean, I think it's sort of important, let us know how much money you're spending on this deal. So, there were my comments, I, okay, if anybody tells me how much are we spending?
Okay, it's public comment, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to address it?
It's $6,800.
How much?
$6,800.
Wow, what a range for. Wow. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Jim, I'm again WarSister. I'm just going to go with my standard saying, the minutes don't act or, like what happens. It seemed to be a little bit bad, but I'll go to page four solicitor's report. Aside from this being factually inaccurate, a misrepresentation to the public, it was quoted pretty well until the end. And something was left out. And, uh, you know, while trying to misrepresent the facts and sway it towards a continuing may, something was left out there about, I think there were two cases that had to do with, I think it was said that, two cases that weren't Dr. Mullins, I think were, were quoted. And, I think, you go on the quote here, "Dr. Mullin acquired that actions not undertaken by him." But, he didn't put in there what Mr. Gary had said in the commentary about, which were, there were two cases that weren't Dr. Mullins. And, and that's not how you announce cases under the sunshine. You don't announce cases and say, "They weren't Dr. Mullins." Hardee's, Dr. Mullin, court. So, if they're not my cases, you don't say they're not Dr. Mullins' cases. You say, "They're Mr. Smith, Mrs. Jones." Then you announce the Dr. Mullin, and then you announce the court, under the Red Eagle, under the sunshine law. You don't say, "These two cases aren't Dr. Mullins' cases." Because that's what he did. And then, he, they left that piece out, but they put the piece in, but I addressed it, and said, "Hey, what about the Dr. Mullins?" "Dr. Mullin acquired that actions not undertaken by him." And I said, "Wait a second." And then you put the Dr. Mullins on that, on the page. Michelle, vehicle accident, Dr. Mullin, and 2014 assessment appeal, plaintiff Christine Murray, Dr. Mullin. So, you know, even when you're trying to be accurate, you're not accurate. So, the only one, other way you're going to get around this is to put this stuff on YouTube, get a video camera in here, and even with video, in the sunshine law suit, you guys can't even admit to a video being an accurate record. In the court documents, you deny that a video record is accurate. You say that you can't confirm a video record when you guys are audio recording the meeting. You have no way of confirming the video, even though you have the audio recording, and you can confirm the video. This is how ridiculous it is. How ridiculous it is, you know? So, my suggestion is put it on YouTube, get a video camera, put it on YouTube, let people see it. Get it, put it on cable access, let people see it. Because there's just no way you guys can get it right. No way. He can't get it right. Your own solicitor, who's supposed to be backed by some other standards, can't get it right. Anything else? Oh, that's part one. Part two is November. November, you guys talked about having an executive session for the decision of the Office of Urban Records. Where's the docket number? You guys can ask the docket number? Well, I don't remember either, Art. Are the minutes supposed to be an accurate reflection of what happens here? Well, you're supposed to have the docket number according to the sunshine law, and it's not, it's hard to think, there's, Red Eagle, you guys, how many years have I been telling you, we can do this? It's not a hard thing, Art, same thing every time. Bone, the lid. You, you want, you want me to take this one down? You want to go in front of Augustine, or whoever else? Waste one action, Art? Thank you. Anyone else a little minutes before I call the question? Scott?
Scott, WarSister. Um, I've had these meetings for nineteen years. I'm tired, just listen to this guy, I can imagine how much fun you're having out there.
I mean, it's no fun, it really is. Um, so, I, I can't, I cannot fathom. Mr. Quigley has also asked at one point, "What are these things, maybe watergate actor?" Well, I used to think it was a real... I mean, some stuff about the township is, I'm just going to joke, but... There has got to be a way that I can sit at my home break, and when it gets contentious, like it just was, I can hit pause, just like the, the back of the school district was before. I can hit pause, not come in here and cringe, I mean, it's, it's not pleasant. And it shouldn't be that way. I mean, if you guys have a resident telling you you're lying, you're misrepresenting, you're intentionally sub, sub, you know, subjugating public records for your own benefit, for your own political gain, for whatever, that can't be a lot of fun, Art. I mean, it really, you know, you don't make enough money to sit there and take this crap.
Thank you.
Month in, month out. But, I mean, really, I mean, you're a good man, Art, I believe before you were supervisor. I don't, I think you became a supervisor for the right reasons. To sit here and have somebody publicly, what do you say, reexamine, I think he's, he's doing a good job of making you folks here to be less than, for a comment. And I don't think that you are. So, I have to come to these meetings for almost twenty years, and I can't really understand why there is no public access channel, why it's not recorded like a small one. Meetings are, are, are recorded, certainly not a monetary issue. And you, you're certainly not a, a vested contingent. Could, could you explain why that has not been done?
It's not something that we, that we can move forward with. So, again, you're a member of the...
My, my comment is, is if, if the three of you individuals can discuss this, who can consider recording it in your 2016 budget. See, people don't like this meeting when they're ticked off. People don't like that. I mean, you want people to be, get comfortable about it. When people feel that their government is transparent, it's when people start distrusting government. When people distrust our government, you want people to be involved. And I think that people should be involved where all they're doing is suing you, um... Schooling you, land-vesting you, belittling you, whether it's deserved or whether it's not. I mean, I've always said, I've been there, I've been back to my network, you see, I've been there, I want to call them to the test. It's no fun, Art, and they're going to be in your shoes. But, you know, twenty-five years ago, you know, I started a lot of times commenting on minority communities dislike the presence of police in their neighborhood. And I was like, you don't want to come to your neighborhood, help yourself to police here.
I understand.
So, I, I would like to see the three of you individuals consider connectionist budget, or at least put a resolution together that you would look at public access, you could look at recording. I mean, the Borough Contract, which I would say is, is less accurate than WarSister Township does. And like, that's just a little personal, there's a, there's a, so, if you individuals could, uh, maybe consider that, I think, uh, those of us who would look, uh, less than join this, I, are, are lucky.
Okay, well done. Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on this motion on table? All questions, all votes in favor, say aye on that. Obviously, the next item on the executive treasuries report. Treasury report general fund, a change on cash basis, $343,000. change on cash basis, three hundred forty-three thousand, seventy-five cents. State fund, two hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars, one cent. Capital reserve, five thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars, thirty-nine cents. Suing fund has a negative five hundred ten thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and thirty cents. Do I hear a motion to approve the treasurer's report for October 2015?
Mr. Chairman, I hope that we approved the treasurer's report as rated for October 2015.
Comments on the treasurer's report?
Jim Moll, Forecaster. You know, one thing I do take is the moral high ground. So, you know, when we, when we take people's comments at face value, we look at morality.
Excuse me, but this is comments on the treasurer's report, please.
And the point is, the point is, you have to evaluate, you have to evaluate, you know, exactly what's been going on, okay? And getting to the treasurer's report, I'm asking you to comment about the treasurer's report, right? I've asked you for a breakdown, okay? You guys say, "You're not breaking," right?
We have a breakdown, it's a sheet here.
Well, now, I asked you for a breakdown of the legal, this solicitor's legal aspect, and you're telling me that you don't have it. You got a media day, right? Susan Conlon tells me to go file write to note requests. She says, "I'm good at filing write to note requests." She says, "I filed lots of write to note requests, but I don't have a media day." So you don't have any.
I just wanna make sure.
So you know what I did? I filed a write to note request. She told me that if I filed a write to note request, that I would be provided with the information. So, on September 21st, I filed a write to note request and get the information. You guys would give it to me for nothing, but you made me go through the write to note process to get the information. Now, this is not the Lillie Lane, this is not Yelly, this is not, you know, we heard the Dietrich. This is, you know, each file, write to note request, get the information that I asked you for, publicly, okay? Your staff would work, unnecessary, you know, whatever, okay? How'd you turn that? He said I couldn't handle it. Susan told me I could. She said, "File a write to note request, I can have the info." So, Art, where do I comment?
Is that your comment? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I did write the note request, get the information that I've been asking you for for the last three months. Susan told me.
That's enough calling out individual names. Thank you.
File, file a write to note request.
Okay, and you were denied?
I was denied.
Okay. Eric, sorry. Tommy, do you wanna explain to us why you denied that request?
I believe the, you know, I'd ask Jim to confirm, because I believe the denial because of those that do format that exists.
In the format, so you risked a change of the realm, so that you could have, which the right to know law does not allow, right?
Any public document is available to all requesters.
I'll give you, I'll give you the response.
Let us not debate the right to know request in this motion for treasurer's report.
So, that's, that's what the problem, Art. The problem is you're unwilling to work with members of the public and provide information. That's the problem.
You're entitled to any public document, as is any other document.
And if you look at what's happening now, you know, members of the public sit here and say that, you know, they're here to stand. If you look at really what's happening, it's the board who is really coming after the members of the public. It's the board who's treating the public with disrespect. It's the board who has a problem with the public and disdain for giving us information. There is no way for us to give information. That's the problem, all the public's information.
Very similar. Dr. Malik has a request, and has received a single solicitor's bill for the last five years, I think, breakdown of individual phone calls, point ones, so he knows what the solicitors' charges or bills are.
But we don't, we tell them several times. We doesn't know where they are in relationship to the treasurer's report. What's, what are you hiding there, Art, in the treasurer's report?
The treasurer's report is a disaster. It follows the rule.
And invoices are categorized in the treasurer's report. So I may have been invoiced, but it's where they're categorized. You have two hundred thousand dollars worth of legal invoices sitting in that treasurer's report somewhere.
Yes, and as you've heard from us in the past, the treasurer has to analyze where they go to, their basements, get their charges to different people. It's all part of it. You're not stupid enough not to know what's going on there, James. You know exactly where they are.
What did you say, I'm hot, what?
You're not dumb enough. You're an intelligent individual, you know what's going on. What are you trying to do to us?
What?
I know you don't get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just to clarify, the income and expense year-to-date report is always available to any request.
I'm sorry, because what's going on? She said a couple of questions about the format of the document. I have a couple of questions about the format of the document and the financial. I imagine that the township has some standard software that they use to split this together?
This is from the standard software package that we have. We're in the process of migrating over to a new one. We expect next year this to be entirely different and a lot more believable, or not believable, informed is the right word. So yes.
Great. I imagine that that software, to produce this document, individual items have to be categorized and put into categories to then come out into different budgetary revenues and expenses?
Yeah, I believe so. But again, comments? I don't wanna be accused of answering questions.
So it's my experience, my experience, your Karen financial advisor, that if you enter expenses and you have categories, the standard software package will put out a budget, it will put out a reconciliation of expenses, it will put out a reconciliation of revenue, and that's not something that can be manipulated online, it has to be as entered into the system, or your auditors will pick that up.
Correct.
And your auditors will absolutely report that as exceptions within your year-end report, your required, you know, filings and that sort of thing. So personally, as someone who has seen this stuff before, who's prepared it, who's a licensed CPA in the state, I don't see anything wrong with it. I don't see how you could make it live or buy anything. Thank you.
As I said, we did purchase a new calendar software package that we're in the process of migrating over to. One of the things that we were looking at was to make it more understandable to most people. So as we go through that, as it migrates over, you know, we hopefully have a lot less surprises where things are in here, should help people understand how one-based account works. Okay? Anyone else?
Andrew, Forecaster. Isn't also true, though, when your invoices come in and they get coded, that's the account to get coded to, and it's possible that an error could be made where a bill from an invoice from Mr. Garrett's office could be coded accidentally and put into zoning funds. And therefore, it would show up under zoning until someone went back and actually audited it and caught it. Possibility?
Anyone else? All questions, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, so the next item is the payment of bills in the township. Do I hear a motion to approve the payment of bills in the township amount, five hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I hope that we pay bills in the township and amount of five hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Jim Moll, Forecaster, again. Got a bill for a whistle purse on here for twenty-nine thousand bucks. Do you have a breakdown on that?
Not with me now.
That's available, as you know.
I have your answer.
I said, "I do not have it here with me."
No. So you have no idea what the, what the breakdowns?
Not confirmed.
You know, it would be a conditional use of that.
No, I don't. Jim?
No. I'll make a suggestion. Don't pay the conditional use bill. Don't pay it at all. Can actually, get your money back for the conditional use bill. Get it all back. Because my life evaluation is close to a hundred grand of wasted money. Total waste. Because what we got through that whole condition use process, plus the appeal, was nothing. We got zero. You got, basically, they got the application, no conditions, no restrictions, a waste of legal time. I could have advised you for zero. I would have gladly gone for free, because I actually did advise you for free. Or you were gonna lose. Right? I turned out being correct. We lost. Get your money back. Get our money, actually, it's not your money, it's ours. Get our money back. He should go. Find another solicitor. That's my advice. Perilous job. That's my opinion. As far as bills go, do you want your bills, do you look at your bills?
Treasurer's for the law.
As far as you can, let me give you an example of how, and I told Joe over the end, your screening process is code. Because we have your solicitor billing our township for what he's billing in another township, and you're paying. Here's a bill I found for a James Paul, two thousand nine dash oh four sixty write to note, right? But here's what's underneath. Review of New Howe write to note request. How does a Mr. New Howe write to note request end up under a Jim Moll write to note offer? Have you got it?
Again, Jim, I don't have that from, I'm not aware of it.
You guys seem to be so anxious to increase my cost to the township that you're putting other people's write to note requests under appeals for Jim Moll. And the public would like to see, I mean, this isn't the first time I've done this. You know, he wonders why I gave these bills. This is the kind of stuff that happens.
Excuse me, that does not necessarily mean that that didn't happen.
Art, this is weird, Art.
You're understanding waiting things here.
I've done this over and over, and I've done this meeting twenty times, showed you this stuff.
But your interpretations are not all correct.
You're putting other people's write to note requests under my name to inflate the bills. There it is. It's under my name. Number two. Tony Shear, why did you guys hire special counsel for the Sunshine, or the Sunshine Ball case?
Again, it's a comment period.
I understand.
Okay, I assume that's from the insurance company.
From the insurance company. Why did you turn that over?
You can hear again, what we're talking about, paying the bills.
I understand. And what I'm gonna tell you, Ben, is, if you turn this over, the Sunshine Ball case over to the insurance company, and you did it recently, why didn't you do it in the beginning of the Sunshine Ball case?
This doesn't make sense.
Third question. Because, because if that's the case, get our money back from him. Because you should have turned it over in the beginning and saved us, what, twenty grand? Thirty grand? That we didn't have to pay, because apparently the insurance company's paying now, right?
So, pardon?
Well, then we're not paying anymore, right?
Again.
Why didn't you do it in the beginning instead of waiting until now? And number two, who made the decision to turn it over to the insurance company?
Again, Jim, thank you. I appreciate your comments. We will.
What, I mean, is this like a secret society?
I appreciate your comments.
This is a secret society.
I am not deterred. Thank you. Anyone else comments on the bills?
Scott Weiss, the Forecaster. Again, I found a question about bills.
You have a comment about?
My comment, don't you, sort of. My comment to approve the bills. My comment is that every time I come here and see you individuals questioned about the bills in detail, your response to Dr. Malik is, "I don't know all of it." The last time I was here, I witnessed this bill from, from a county township, I mean, must be a bill for working on a township. I haven't heard anything about whether that was resolved, the last time you said it. What I'm just, what I'm observing, movies in general, by sitting in the back of the room, is that this guy seems to know your bills and better be telling you that, or you just don't wanna answer the questions. But that's about it. That is about reason for not answering the questions if you don't know them. That's another issue. You don't wanna answer them, that's another more egregious answer. But my concern is if you don't know these bills in detail, and you haven't looked at these bills in detail, and you haven't asked a team the validity of these bills in detail, because at least one guy is disquestioning the validity of these bills, I gotta wonder how long you can approve. How can you fast motion approve bills if you, by your own admission, don't know? And Art, this is not, this is not an attempt to make you look foolish, I have no interest in doing that. I have a genuine concern that the three of you individuals are voting to pay bills of which you have insufficient knowledge of the details. And I'm concerned that those bills are not being adequately reviewed whatever they are. And I, I, I'm a little hitched in the back how we can just approve bills that we don't know details of. And a couple of you have been accused of micromanaging folks at the township. Whether that's opinion or fact is conjecture, I won't comment on it. But what I will comment on is if you are not adequately prepared to answer questions about details of the bill here, then you are certainly not qualified. That's all I got. Thank you.
No, thank you. We have the comment we made last week, I did check the treasurer's bill to township regarding some of the things we wanted to ask question. And the township did due the judge entry, you said, make sure they did correct, ultimately I thought a lot of it, so that was taken care of.
So, Worcester Township, short paid this gentleman's firm's fee bill?
The question regarding billing, and what happened, anything you've done on Worcester Township, if the bill was done right, it was done and be judged entry, and taken care of.
So does that?
Question, question on the Worcester's bill.
I'm sorry, Steve, you can let my take.
The question was, the question Dr. Moll said about the Worcester's being of a charge. Any charges that were mislabeled, missed done, were taken care of, the judge entry were taken care of. That was the question, I think, you or Dr. Moll, last meeting, and since looking into it, I looked into it, with the township, at all, with the treasurer, and those things were taken care of. Any kind of judge entry to measure where Worcester was charged, was taken care of. Any kind of judge entry to measure Worcester, what's the church name, was taken care of.
I will translate that, Steve, as meaning the bill from the attorney was short paid by the amount that we were charged for working on the township. I'll leave that. Thank you for addressing that. I appreciate it, Steve. Anyone else? Mr. Garrett?
Yeah, there, Worcester. Every month that comes to the meeting and one of the lines, I guess, a motion to approve thing of the bills comes up, and somebody rattles off a number of 525,273 dollars and two cents or whatever it is. While I'm looking through here, I don't even see anything in here about with that number.
Okay. Just you see posted in the back of the, the building before the meeting.
It's supposed to be Dr. Moll.
Do you know the bills? Is there a breakdown?
Is there this time? You're saying?
There is. It's right back on the back corner of the board.
There's a record in the amber.
There's a whole list up. There's about 50 or 60 of them. We do have a process that we follow and every other township follows. And in looking at the bills, making sure that everything is, is done correctly. Because you also have a CPA, what is it? And every year we deliver it to the shareholders as possible. As much as super questions around CPAs or something, we're not going to agree. Expect hours, quarters, we have staff that is charged. All right, call one question, men. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, now that that's been passed, I would like to address the accusations that the board does not accurately review the bills. Every month before this meeting, I go into the township office and I spend time looking at every bill. I picked up the notation about the Howell request in Mr. Gary's bill, brought it to the treasurer's attention, and she did short pay the solicitor's firm as a result. Every long once in a while, something like that happens, I pick it up or the treasurer picks it up and the adjustments are made. So if there is a mistake in that sort of attribution, particularly of the legal bills, it is corrected on the spot. I don't want anyone thinking that we do not look at the bills. I review every bill and that's after the treasurer and the assistant treasurer have reviewed every bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item only again is the brake retarder restriction. This is to request a PENDOT study regarding brake retarder restrictions and a portion of skipback bike direction complaints from some of the neighbors living along there, I believe.
That's correct. Just to clarify, this is not coming from me personally, but several residents of Center Point have spoken to me in the past and continuing about the issue of trucks that they feel are using their brake retarders in the village. And I've asked the manager what process we would follow in order to look at that and determine if anything can be done to assist the residents with this noise issue. And this was the recommendation that we have a study done. Do you want Mr. Ryan to explain the details of the study or give some details here?
The process is relatively simple. The board of supervisors would authorize me to ask PENDOT to conduct the study to determine if warrants are met for the enactment of a brake retarder restriction along any portion of the road in the township. PENDOT conducts a study at no cost of the township. If it is approved by PENDOT, PENDOT will provide to the township a signage plan and then it's township's responsibility to install the signage at her plant and to see to all enforcement actions.
Okay, thank you. So do I hear a question?
I'm sorry.
First question, Tom, who would force the township to enforce this?
The township would have to adopt an ordinance and that would amend our township code relative to the vehicles and traffic section of the code. And it would fall for the township or the state police to enforce it. I can tell you it doesn't happen very well, but according to the post of PENDOT, next time in the year if somebody enforces one of these restrictions will be the first time in charge of something.
Another question, I've heard this talk about before, it's something, I know there's some signs on valuable road already, but it's not something that they enforce. But I guess the question, if we just put it in the village, how do we decide valuable road? And I guess also, you know, I can speak to people who live along the extension as well. You know, we just stop trucks from the extension, turn this lane back or that, we will wear that. I would just enforce the process and define the law in that. There is a fine.
They would be, yes. It's a step in the right direction.
I think it's one of those useful flaws, but I think that's okay.
Hopefully it acts as a deterrent. Hopefully it acts as a deterrent. It seems odd to me that along a straight stretch of skipback pipe, the trucks would be using those brake retarders anyway, coming down a nonvaluable project completely to see it. And that's why it's signed.
It's one of the moving possibilities to break, and they have a top, outside or red light.
They haven't used it in the village, just because they're going too hard and fast.
They get, or they're going to try and save traffic, slow down.
Because it's on a hill where they're having to go brakes.
Very. Do you want to make a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request for a PENDOT study regarding brake retarder restrictions on a portion of skipback pipe in Center Point now.
Comment?
Not until you get the motion on the floor.
I'll send it out with this question, is there kind of a payment worth of?
Yeah, basically, you said.
And that. And that, although I find it doesn't have a fund, and they will do the study in the plant and try to pass that. I'll take that.
All right, second. Neil, I have a question. Our comments are answered.
John, you're Worcester. Brake retarder, you need to add the Oxford Road down by the municipal building, firehouse. I can't imagine people to live there. If I had a time to get down and catch a trucker, I think it's one or two truckers that are doing this. Let me just read something from you from PENDOT. This is standing, that's an old article, so I'm going to be still, PENDOT's, Chief PENDOT's Mayor, Dan Schmaler, Division Harrisburg, assistance can be switched on or off by the driver. They should use the brake and the retarder, he said, insisting that the retarder do not make excessive noise when properly using the function of the propeller. I don't know if, does everybody know what they're talking about brake retarders? When you hear that noise, have you heard it? Okay? If those things are in proper working order, you don't even know if they're working, at least not because of noise, said Don Snyderman, safety director of Pennsylvania Motor Truck Association. Were properly earlier called by a small minority of truckers out there, having no, truckers in my family could say, "This is a trucker." Okay? They all own a trucker. Out there, everyone would hear the trucks make noise and modify the off routes to that end, so I would have said. So you need to look on valuable road because the sounds they make, I mean, really have a valuable road and not just skipback pipe. You know, as far as enforcement issue, the one trucker, it does went around hit them. And I can't imagine living down here on that road. I mean, I hear that where I live. And it's just, you know, annoying. I, you know, state police, again, some of the traffic devices that we have or we don't have, that are available, can alert the state police when some of this stuff is going on and they can properly control. But again, we're not purchasing these type of items to help the residents in the township. And that's another thing we need to look at, a whole separate issue. Thank you.
Anyone else want to mention? Scott?
Scott Weiss, Worcester. My district's only, our own, built by its own admission. We've got no way to enforce these things. We don't, we don't even have a fire marshal. So we're not going to come up with some way to enforce these things. This isn't stuff Democrats, you guys. They pass these field with laws to say, "Well, we did something about it." But in fact, it's a law. Aside from braces and signs in people's front yards along the nonvaluable road and skipback pipe, and I know Ohio's township loves signs. It's not something you know about. It's something Gregory Sun signs on the school. It's not going to give us, it's very difficult to enforce it. So how are we spending time in Mr. Ryan's time and, I don't know, even do studies and put more laws on the book? And this is not Democrats, you guys. Who criticize government, who has passed work, laws and rules and regulations, we can't enforce it. You know, we're just getting assistant township manager this year. We can't do it unless, unless we feel the work, we spend time at night talking about it. We can't enforce it. When you come up with a way to enforce it, then let's talk about a resolution. That's a, what speed limit, so it's not, everyone, we can enforce it. So before we talk about wasting Mr. or using Mr. Ryan's time to get proposals, to pass licenses, which can cover our township charter, things we can't enforce, let's talk about the end result. How do we improve people's lives in this township? If we don't improve people's lives in this township by avoiding the noise of jailbreak, let's figure out what we can do that as opposed to telling them, you know, we feel really bad, you know, you've got to listen to this. We don't have no way to enforce it, but you know, we try, we, oh, good. Out ourselves, we can't, we can't do anything because we can't enforce it. So if we have a way to enforce it, this is just, it's like, so we're all telling maybe somebody, it's only way to fix the problem.
Scott, and I'd like to, which, I guess someone has brought the attention, one of the supervisors, the lieutenant, and I think Sue said or Tom said that at least aside there, it may stop to take a piece of the sign. We don't look each part of the sign, it's very long now. Hopefully the person will see the sign and say, you know, I can't even, I'm not, I'm just trying to, there are, I said, there are some on the, the north side of the road.
So Steve, if your view of enforcement is the direction of signs, we don't need to study it. We don't need to talk about study. We don't need you to ask PENDOT about a study. You don't have to have Mr. Ryan on the phone talking to PENDOT. Mr. Ryan, can you be on the phone looking for grants for sewer projects and things that we care about? Put some signs up.
You want to look for steward grant?
I'm sorry?
Look for steward grant.
It's a back end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Steve, it's a hell of a lot cheaper to put signs up in the offending areas than just paying Mr. Ryan to take his time, monkey around, emailing, writing letters, talking to PENDOT.
And so as Mr. Ryan, some of them I paid, but he happened to be looking at the last option, the steward grant money option, he committed to doing that.
It's too late.
But I'm still looking, Mr. Ryan.
I'm looking for a grant for a project that already started. I'm sure you have a decision.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you. Anyone else before a call or a question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And I'll just point out that you require a study by PENDOT to try to sign this place to PENDOT's record.
Thank you. Next item is the bid award, right of permission to approve the sale of used equipment through public auction.
Can I have Mr. Ryan explain what we're selling? Would you mind, Mr. Ryan, just letting everyone know what's being sold?
Yes, the township left for public here two pieces of public works equipment, neither which are of need to the township at this time. First item is a 1978 Ford 555 tractor loader. The second, a 1981 John Deere 1050 tractor. The items are placed on municipal, properly advertised, and the board has, for this evening, the auction results, the recommendation to approve the sale of those two items.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the sale of the two listed items, tractor loader and John Deere tractor on municipal for auction.
Comments from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is the separation agreement. Do I hear permission to approve the separation agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the separation agreement with attached employee as prepared by the solicitor.
Next. Comment, you want to discuss it?
Before the board, it's separation agreement for a township and employee setting forth the terms of the separation agreement and, and other provisions you had noted in the document prepared by the township solicitor.
As a result of a reorganization as you did at the township's yet.
That is correct.
Thank you. Comments from the floor before I call a question? All those in favor say aye.
Art.
Having quicker, Jim. What up?
Well, I have a question. Where's, is the agreement in the packet?
Agreement will be available tomorrow.
How come?
Okay, do you want to address that, Tommy?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a draft, it's a draft agreement and it's not a public document until approved and I can give you a copy after the meeting.
So how are we going to comment on it? How are we going to comment on it? Well, let me come to the microphone. Jim Moll, Worcester. How are we going to comment on that?
I understand the question. It's a draft agreement, it's regarding personal matter, it's not a public document.
Well, I'm lying. Sorry, I'm lying. It's okay. Do you understand? I'm a tall man, Jim. I'm a tall man.
David, is our solicitor's responding to your problem?
Believe me, that doesn't really.
I know, it doesn't matter.
That doesn't impress me. It doesn't. You know, I, I have questions. So we're allowed, we're allowed to comment on this, right?
You're allowed to comment before I call the question.
How are we going to comment if we don't know the substance of what's in the agreement?
Again, it's personnel issue.
I understand that.
You can cuss the DPA members.
I don't. What do you think?
Nothing. I'm sorry, Jim.
How are we supposed to, well, you asked for a comment.
Well, I have to do that by the law.
Well, no, I, I can ask it. You don't want questions, right?
It's a comment period.
Right, it's a comment period. So we get to comment on this quote, quote, what were you both on here?
Separation agreement.
Right, we, we're going to comment on the separation agreement. Only thing is, we can't see the agreement. So how are we going to comment on the agreement if we can't see it? So can we ask questions back?
It's a comment period. You can see it tomorrow. Then you can yell at me.
So we can't, so we cannot, you're, what are you conducting this meeting? There's no way that we can give a negligent comment on the agreement because you're not giving us the agreement.
That's important, you can stay long.
And therefore, and therefore, you're depriving us of the ability to give comment.
Stay long.
Do you understand?
Oh, wow.
Do you understand your logic and your love saying?
I understand that you have a logic to that.
Well, how can I make a comment on the agreement when you won't show me the agreement? How can I make a comment on the agreement when you won't let me ask you a question about the agreement? Can I sit here and tell you that the agreement is unfair?
You can do pretty much anything.
Let me ask you another question.
Again, it's a comment period.
Well, I'll try, maybe you can make sense out of my question. Which, which one are we going on now? That? Who's the separation agreement? Terrific, yes.
We reorganized, okay, we know overall, we know our account, I think that's your situation here where we had a reorganization and eliminated our position.
Right. And you are the chairman, right?
Yes.
Susan doesn't kind of want to do it.
Please provide your comments.
I mean, I understand, but you know, we seem to get a little, you don't take ownership of Susan. You, you can be the best chairman.
Provide your comments.
You as the chairman, you as the chairman of control of the meeting, so you have the discretion.
I try.
I understand, I try. So.
And since Mr. Butler doesn't feel well tonight, please come up with some slack.
Can I, let's, let's all, is this agreement anything like the Sardo agreement, the Cornell agreement?
Is a separation agreement between an employee to a nonvaluable.
Right, right. What do you mean, I'm calling? Is it, is it a severance agreement like the Cornell agreement and like the Sardo agreement?
As Mr. Weiss has pointed out, it's not a Q and A period.
I'm talking to Art.
There's something called control of a meeting, which any board member can interject.
Art, you don't have to answer questions and it's not a public document.
Art, I still satisfy me to answer this question. Is it anything like, is it anything like a Cornell agreement?
A separation agreement with, with an employee. It's very similar to previous separation.
Because those agreements had clauses in them, certain clauses that required the employee nondisclosure agreements, et cetera. Does this?
This document will be available to you tomorrow. Tomorrow, or actually today, if this one's passed. All right? Until then, it's not a.
I think it's, I think it's basically unfair.
I recognize that.
I think it's unfair as a public, and I think there's no way anyone here can give a negligent public comment on this item.
If that was standard, anyone else before I call a question? Scott?
Scott, basis for session. Again, all of that happens on you. If you don't want to bring it upon yourself, stop doing things that was, I, I would suggest that the board make a motion, if this is not a public document and the public has not had, had put in a comment, then it tabled us until the next meeting, the supervisor said you have given the public proper time to inspect, review, and to comment. The same as you that I'm on, but this.
It's what they have to follow legal rules.
I don't think it's legal, it's hard, it's doing the right thing. It's a public document.
No, it's not until it's passed.
I'm sorry?
It's not a public document until it's passed, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, we made that clear. It's a personnel issue.
So, is it exempt from disclosure until this?
Until it's passed.
Okay, so it's exempt from disclosure?
Yes.
So, is that why?
And you can yell at us, what are you wanting to do?
Is that why we have this conundrum? It's like a, of a Nancy Pelosi thing, you can't see Nancy Pelosi.
Don't ask, and don't, that's unfortunate.
Scott, personally, we're following the legal solicitor, and once again, a solicitor files an account, and we follow, especially though, into the determination period, and things like that, and be very, very careful the way we can, we're following a legal advice of our solicitor.
And so, I would summarize that advice is, it's not a public document for public review and comment. Is that what you're saying?
It's not a public document, I have no right to know until it's passed and executed.
And that's because it differs in personnel, which gives a different type of issue.
So, the public cannot comment on this until it's been factured, correct?
Public can comment.
But the public has no knowledge of the content, so therefore, the public can't comment.
It's state law.
Okay.
It's a catch and warning to, we're totally done.
So, your answer, Tommy, because it's not a public document, so it can't be disclosed to the public until it's heard. Is that a summary here?
Yes, this summary. Thank you. Oh, I said that at the beginning.
Very, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, I'm going to call Mr. Ray.
Scott, I want to hear from you.
I, you know, right.
I just want to ask if the board has seen the document and they know what it is?
Yes. Thank you. All, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirty. It's a resolution to accept Wanda Lane for dedication as a public road.
Okay, for some details, um, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept, uh, Wanda Lane as a public road, for dedication as a public road.
Resolution two thousand fifteen thirty.
Correct, correct. Okay. Jeff, do you want to explain what we're doing here and why we're, we're having this?
Yes, uh, township was asked to take a dedication of Wanda Lane, which is currently a private road. Uh, in order to do that, I was, I was asked to go out and inspect the road and to see what needed to be done, to bring the road up to township specification, and to make it eligible for Pendant Liquid Fuels additional, so that we can get, uh, liquid fuels funded. Um, I did that last fall, um, and it required, uh, repair and complete repaving, and also the construction, completion of, construction of the cul-de-sac again, because it is a cul-de-sac road. Uh, the owner of the road has completed all the, uh, the improvements that were suggested by me, and, uh, the road is now ready for consideration for the board to take the dedication.
Okay, we have a significant number of private roads in the township. Most of the time, the private roads are not built to public specifications, so we don't take them because it involves a lot of repair, reworking, everything else which is public expense. The people that had owned Wanda Road came to us and, and asked us to take it over. We sent Joe over, said, you've got to bring it up to the public specifications and make sure that we're not going to have to pay the right away or anything. They've done everything that we've asked them to do, or adopt a code and everything else, and they've also done the biostudies for, uh, until we can get public fuel money to take care of it.
Correct.
So, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, anybody have any questions to add after we'll be discussing? No, I'll call a question, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Next item is Resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-one. This is a resolution to grant preliminary final plan approval to proposed plan of redevelopment for the Meadowwood community. Okay, do we have a motion or? This has been discussed before.
Exactly. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept that we approve, uh, preliminary and final plan approval for the proposed final land development for the Meadowwood community.
Certainly.
Okay, Jeff, do you want to explain a little bit about what's going on here so everybody knows this is your problems before we're going to bring that up?
Certainly, uh, Meadowwood, Meadowwood Retirement Community, uh, is proposing an expansion, um, which would include an indoor swimming pool, expanded rehabilitation facilities, uh, some, some outside space, uh, which you're calling it, uh, activity patio, some recrea- recreational amenities, uh, additional stormwater facilities, landscaping, and other improvements in an area adjacent to their current, uh, I guess, main, main building or campus. Uh, they did apply, uh, and submit a land development application along with land development plans. Uh, as you can see up here in yellow is the area of expansion. Uh, it is contained within their property, uh, not visible from, uh, skip back pipe. Uh, went through the process, uh, it was reviewed by our planning commission, county planning commission, uh, myself, and, uh, we are recommending approval, uh, and there are some waivers that are required, and most of those waivers are in conjunction with stormwater facilities, and it's due to the type of stormwater facilities that are constructed.
Right.
So, they can't be our standard stormwater management facilities, but they're using best methods, best practices on site. Um, the storm facilities will function as required by the PMP manual, uh, so I have a problem with any of the waiver requests.
Okay.
Uh, I'd be happy to answer any more questions if you have them, but at this point, uh, the plan's ready for consideration through approval.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion report. Does anybody from the audience want to comment before I call a question? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution two thousand fifteen dash thirty-two. This is a resolution to appoint an assistant township manager and a superintendent officer. We have a resolution two thousand fifteen thirty-two, act pair.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass Resolution twenty fifteen thirty-two to appoint Amanda Donovan as assistant township manager and Tommy Ryan as superintendent officer.
Comments from the floor on this? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, so. And Jay, orders two thousand fifteen dash two fifty-three, it's a motion to authorize advertisement of ordinance to establish a traffic impact fee. Tommy, can you elaborate on that?
As you recall, at our last meeting, the board, uh, considered, uh, two resolutions adopting the, uh, final two, three components for the Act two oh nine, uh, study update, uh, which, uh, the township has seen to over the past year and a half. Uh, that before the board this evening is an ordinance which would enact a traffic impact fee that was calculated as part of that study. Uh, the ordinance, uh, simply updates the township's code, which requires the Act two oh nine fee, uh, implementing that fee, uh, to be effective against.
So, the next step of this process that we've wanted.
That's it.
Okay, do I hear a motion then to approve ordinance two thousand fifteen dash two fifty-three?
This is a, for, this is a motion to advocate.
We're, we're sorry. That's okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize advertisement of the ordinance to establish a traffic impact fee, ordinance number twenty fifteen, it's two fifty-three.
Second. I'll set it up. Thank you. Comments from the floor?
I just want to ask, when you say advertised, where is that coming?
It goes to the Times Herald.
It does. How about on the, how about on the township's website?
Yes, it'll, it'll be up there. Anyone else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item is ordinance two thousand fifteen, two fifty-four, again, motion to advertise, uh, the ordinance to establish the accessible connection requirement.
Do you want to tell them what this is about, too? Go ahead.
The, the, uh, the board likewise considering for authorization to advertise, an ordinance, uh, that, uh, authorizes construction provides for the assessment of the cost of Hickory Hill's sewer, uh, project, uh, determines the method of, uh, the assessments, uh, how the assessments are collected, uh, also sets forth requirements for individual property owners to, uh, connect to the system. Uh, the ordinance is, uh, is requiring part of this, uh, project, and copying the witness of the board this evening, again, not adopting the ordinance this evening, authorizing it for, uh, advertising and public inspection.
And Mr. Ryan, this was discussed at the November second work session, correct? This was presented to the board?
Yes.
I recall that. I had one thing I wanted to discuss with the board, and can you please, since I'm too busy on the planning, um, show me where the requirements are for connecting to the system?
Tell them.
Right. The trust.
It's in there.
Right, so under shall be required to connect to the system. Where's the, right. Except a transfer into a trust created by the property owner, and we suggest to the board that we add in there for the benefit of the property owner. And that's just to clarify that sometimes in estate planning, the owner of a home says, well, I'm going to put the home in a trust, living trusts having been popular a while back, and the way you do it is to declare yourself the homeowner as the trustee and beneficiary. So, the township could decide not to consider that as a triggering transfer for purposes of connection. And I just wanted it to be clear that that's the only kind of trust where we would consider it as not a triggering transfer. If the owner would put the property in trust for his or her children, that is a triggering transfer because effectively, the next owner is going to be a different people. That's a suggestion I have from the board's consideration.
Is there any issue with that? There's no legal issue, I thought, I thought it was the, I thought it was the purpose originally to make sure the transfer to the wife, to the children, anything involving the property owner's estate plan would not be a trigger. If the board wants those transfers to be a trigger, then this is almost correct, and that's what it should say.
Well, right now, if, um, a property owner's will says, I leave my house to my children, that's now a triggering event, whereas if they write a trust before they die, it says, I put the house in trust for my children, that's not a triggering event, that doesn't appear to be the actual, and that's the reason I brought it up. It really depends on which way the board wants to discuss.
You know, again, I consider the steps to build a, it's, it's, I guess, the question, looking at a case when it's pretty close, it's very, 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 very state, and that's not our board to do that, if you're trying to, if they came up and they're going forward as a sale transaction, for those towns, that's a problem. But I heard something to do with looking at people's wills and deeds, and, and, and where to start with.
I'm not clear what you're thinking is, are you thinking that any kind of property owner puts the property in trust, it would be a triggering event? Is that what?
I think it would trigger, I think, I think, followed closely.
Well, right now, putting it in trust would not be a triggering event, so a property owner puts their home in trust for you, and it would not trigger the connection of sewer, and then when that person died, you would own the property, completely different property owner, not even the property owner, and there would be no connection.
No, they're connected, Mark.
Correct. So, I'm just looking for, you know, as you said, it is a slippery slope, but if we decide that we want to allow property owners to put their property in trust for themselves, now we can also say, hey, that's a triggering event. That's how, you know, that's, that's what I'd like the board to consider. Would we like to draw a small line around some of those estate planning issues, and so it's easy enough to put in here.
Jim, what do you think as far as the legal aspect, where do you want to?
Legally, community, right, it's up to you.
Most satisfied with the way you're doing it. Yeah, that's what I, I did, if you, were they not, but, I think, probably get clean and move forward.
Okay.
Do you agree? Make a motion on the way.
That's fine, it's not a big deal, I'm just hoping for it to consider a target that goes to non-trigger events. Then I move that we authorize the advertisement of ordinance fifteen, two fifty-four, of ordinance providing for the assessment of sewers in Hickory Hill area. I condensed that fifteen one to four.
Comments from the floor, this is the advertisement, so if you can comment, why don't we go? Go ahead.
You have my strong opinion on this whole infrastructure thing. Factoring lengths costs taxpayers over a million dollars. That includes what the township spent and what this board spent, but yet no money is afforded to our sewer project. We're not in a full neighborhood. One of the board members, I don't know, Tommy, said we live in a full neighborhood. No offense against people who live in four and three, that's an affluent neighborhood. We've spent millions on open space with private landowners that we cannot enjoy. In fact, one such landowner that has been overprotective is John Harris convicted on child pornography.
I'm sorry, I've said this before, we will not have individual residents called out.
Okay, well, his land has been protected, and there's a recent incident occurred where a father and his son were fishing, named Chase, that, who chased away by him, yet there's no money afforded to us. As stated many times, where all we are asking for is the township to pay for the infrastructure. The residents will pay for the hookup when the home is sold or the separate system fails. Again, our taxpayer dollars would spend, my money would have zero benefit to the residents. I cannot enjoy these private lands if these landowners have been protected. So, please explain to me how what we are asking for is not fair. Every village receives ten thousand dollars for each resident, plus grants, why are we not being treated fairly? Those were our tax dollars given to fair people, why are we not being treated the same? I mean, there has to be an explanation for this. Why are we not being allowed to have that money? It's our taxpayer's dollar, it's sewer. And I worked hard, and I gave that back to the other money. We couldn't get grants, I understand we can't get grants. All we're asking for is the infrastructure here, that's all we ask for. Protecting these private landowners, and yet no benefit to us, nothing. We just said, oh, just, just pay for it, just pay for it. I don't have the money to pay for it. My car, my West car is two thousand and three, I'm driving two thousand and six. Our neighborhood is not a full neighborhood, I'm really disgusted, whoever made that comment of it, and then tell me I got buck up fifteen thousand dollars.
Uh, just a question, just a comment, I'm not sure the influence, the conversation, I think we'll stress it up here, I think, I wasn't around when it happened, but what we have heard the board, and from the indication from Mr. Nealon, the supervisor, this year at the time, when they came up, is that this area maybe was more depressed than your neighborhood? I mean, it just, there was money available, I, I, I don't, I don't think the rules actually hurt, there was a difference in the price limit here that allowed the grant money to be available for this neighborhood. And we'd say, this is more affluent than your neighborhood, one versus the other, but with money available based, I believe, on the, the value of the home up here.
At that, at that time.
At that time.
Correct.
At that time.
And again, the township, that company said township gave the residents money, that's in public record. They also got grants, we understand the grants aren't available, and there's another issue with the grants, you may have had been able to get grant money, but somebody dropped a ball on that. But irrespective of that, all I'm asking for, the other residents here asking for, is the same.
is the same consideration in Fairview Village that the township used our taxpayer dollars to get to that. I'm not asking to pay for the house in this street. I'll take care of that. I'm not paying for the infrastructure coming down the street. That's what we pay taxes for. Again, we fought within the factoring lights. Don't tell me we don't have the money. We're paying all these private landowners, millions of dollars, and we can't enjoy it. We've got Center Square, Gothos, Golden Development. We got the, what's the other called? We got the Pomre Forum. There's a lot of public, the landowners are being sold off with the public dollars to be used for protective, for public use. Center Square is the highest grossing dock force in the Delco Valley the past four years in a row. As per Kate DiGioff, K Y O. You know, what's going on here? I mean, seriously, all I'm asking for is to pay for the infrastructure. My tax dollars paid for the area infrastructure. I went the same way. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to correct the record before it goes any further. Taxpayer dollars were not spent in Fairview Village. Sewer reserve funds were spent. Whether that's correct or incorrect is not before this board. Taxpayer dollars were not spent. The second misstatement was that grants may have been available, but the ball was dropped. Mr. Mangon and Mr. Hill, when he was our interim manager, both looked tirelessly. From the moment before this project was authorized, they were asked to look, just in case. They looked tirelessly in all areas for any sort of public grant, whether it was federal money, state money, matching money, any money at all. They consistently called our state representatives and senators. They called Ken Best. They called Ken, they called D K. They spoke to everyone. No grant was ever available, whether it was match money or complete grant money at all. It's the economy net. Grants are available for other things, very unfortunately, and not at this point for this project. The third mistake that I've just got to deal with is that open space doesn't save you any money because you can't put your feet on it. Those X number of acres that every private landowner owns, that have been preserved, open space money means that no homes will ever be built there. Homes cost you school taxes. You are not paying taxes for all of those schoolchildren forever, and that's what's saving money.
What's to say all those homes coming in are going to be gone? That's, that's a false argument.
No, it's not, John.
It's a.
Dean, the third one. Let's hold on. There is so much inaccurate information being thrown around. To begin with, I don't have exact views, but I do not believe that even one million has been spent by this township on open space. This, am I correct?
I, we're, we're talking about the motion on the floor.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, which is about the Hickory Hills sewer assessment advertisement.
Okay.
And I understand your argument, I understand how upset you are about getting these numbers that you see happening out there, but you need to define your comments to Hickory Hills advertisement.
Although we didn't require the previous speaker to speak, unfortunately.
You can take up a grant for a comment, that was a sewer plan, for a grant for a comment, if you want to say, I do that.
Okay, I was, it's very difficult to hear wrong numbers thrown around, and people believe that it's true, and it is not. I just believe to.
I understand. Anyone else before I call the motion? Mr. Drayer?
Dan Drayer, prosecutor. A couple things. First thing, when will we be able to comment on this five page, which we haven't had a chance to review?
Okay, this is the, the authorization, you mean the assessment, the connection requirements?
Yeah.
Okay. It will be available tomorrow, correct?
It's in the package.
Right, and then we advertise, we advertise it, okay, and then it will be brought up for a public motion in December, for a, for a hearing, a public hearing.
Public hearing.
And that's when you get your chance to let us know.
And that will be at the, December 16th meeting? December 16th meeting?
That would be the advertisement, of course.
Yeah.
Okay. My next comment is in regard to the grants and everything else that we say that are not available. Unfortunately, I think we missed the, the vote on these grants because they were available back in 1996 to 2006, when they were originally supposed to have planned implemented according to the D P P. When they approved the 537, back in 1996, their expectation was that this would be implemented and completely installed here by 2006. During that period of time, there was numerous grants available for sewer funds, for sewer projects. Unfortunately, we never got that done. The board didn't act, never approved or go forward with the sewer project, and now those grants are no longer available, which would have paid for quite a bit of what we're now expected to pay for. Based on that, and amongst many other reasons, I would again request that the board pay for the infrastructure of this project. Okay, you guys blew it. You had 10 years to do it. During that time, there was great money available. And now, 10 years after that, it's worth even more, I guess, about 10 years. Now we're expected to put the whole building down. Also, the people that have had sand mounds in during that time should be compensated by the board, by the township somehow, by the sewer fund. Apparently, it's money in the sewer fund. Okay, sewer fund money was given to the people in Fairview, it was built. Maybe this money in the sewer fund for the, for the Worcester Haters. I guess that's not tax dollars, so it can be given to, given to different developments. At the same time, I would like to request that the township, we, the sewer companies, it doesn't cost the taxpayer anything, that's income for the township. The sewers have been allocated to Worcester acres for over 20 years in the sewer plan. It's not like you had to build additional capacity to allow for Worcester acres. That's been in reserve for Worcester acres for 20 years. You guys really blew it, and I think we need to make, we need to satisfy the residents in there.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Anyone else? Scott?
So, Mr. Worcester, I've been asking you guys since, uh, many, some questions here about how this is being funded. You guys funded Fairview Village? You need to fund otherwise. I have heard no explanation of parity or lack thereof, so I'd love to understand that. You guys can explain that to me, if, if you can, if not, that's okay. These, uh, let's get back to the, the issue of civic irresponsibility by this board. You guys were.
This is part of the.
Yes, I saw the comment. The civic irresponsibility on this will impart this board has now caused this project to be expensed in $2,016, not in 2000, not in $1996. To correct Mr. Drayer, it's not 10 years, that's 20 years. So I've asked for somebody here on the board, somebody in the township, to do a correction analysis, and tell me, just taking into account inflation, and tell me what this project would have costed, would have cost, what this project would have cost in $1996 if this board had acted on their own resolution instead of ignoring it, and bought open space and spending $6 million here, another million dollar there, the board actively ignored their own resolution. And the only reason that they acted on it is because someone in my development called the D P P, and said, "We have systems failing all over the place. What's going on?" And the D P P basically goes, "You guys need to sort that." So you guys are asking us to fund this in $2,016 when you guys actively ignored it for 20 years? So I, I, I know we fail to see how you can ask us to fund the project in 2016 when you should have started it 20 years ago. And this $14,000, if you throw regressions about 5 or 6 grand, I think a lot of people would be less acrimonious, less resentful about that if they would be paying for this project in $1996 as they should. So essentially, you guys are making us pay for your inaction and your prior prioritization of what I would call net projects. So that's the first thing that hasn't, that, that I haven't had answered. Remember, mind that this thing doesn't even have a dollar figure in it for per household. So unless you pass a resolution, you don't, you're charged for this. Oh, you could, these guys that have built sand mounds, my next neighbor, one of them, another guy, he's, he's got this monstrosity, it's front yard, the only way to look at it, his forehead, he can look out his front door, his front windows and see the street. These people had to do this because you asked them. If I were them, you were asking to pay another 50 grand, I don't shoot your head, Dave. You don't like it, Susan?
Again, again, you're refreshing.
Your comments, okay.
Okay, okay, and then you can comment, and I'll sit here.
No.
Suppose we're going to sit back here.
No, you'll sit down, and then I'll.
I would be really pissed if I spent 30 grand because this board chose to buy open space as opposed to even saying, "Guys, we have to sewer your property as for our own, as for our own ordinance, so we're going to come through here and dig it up," which you guys should have done, with a cup of water, that's a preparation in attitude. What you should have done is said, "Hey, guys, this is 1996, we're putting this project in, you've got to pay for it." I would be certainly more, more inclined to want to pay for that in $1996 than over 20 years later. So that, that is something I think you guys need to consider, giving relief to these people in this development. The other thing is, you guys, I don't know, when, you guys are sitting here discussing this ordinance amongst yourselves like you haven't even read it. I know, Susan, you can tell these gentlemen, read this ordinance before it was available to me at San Diego. I know, I have questions. I mean, why don't I go ask my questions about this?
Next month, just hang with everyone else.
But this is not a question and answer session, is it?
This is not a public hearing, which you will be able to. This is a comment.
Okay, those are my comments, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any response, or you want to get back to you?
Yeah, uh, we, we discussed it earlier tonight. I mean, and I have to go and say, this is where I wish we, for the town to be, a lot of questions we haven't had answered many times in the past regarding grant funding and things like that.
Indulgence.
So we, we've done that. We weren't, we weren't retentive to do.
I were.
Back, back in 1996 to 2006, okay, I can't keep it forward. Why didn't you do it? I don't know.
How long have you been on the board, Susan?
2008. And first thing it says, the important thing that Neil said to me was about sewers in Center Square. I did it for two years, never went away, so they're, they're like.
So you are as responsible as Mark and Susan are. Susan's been on the board for five years.
Yeah, but it goes back, but the issue wasn't an issue when I got the board. It wasn't, definitely a cop-out, still repair. It wasn't until last, all the years.
The township.
I can't, I can't think about that. I'm in a worse situation.
The township, the company is responsible for inaction for 20 years and causing the cost of the project to be inflated at least at the rate of inflation for the past 20 years.
It's been flattened, thank you.
Current board.
We should, well, that's where you feel.
Okay.
The board's.
Anyone else before? Again, this is on the motion to advertise.
Jim, I'm, Mr. St. James. I have to do, try to do some corrections myself. Can anybody?
I must get in.
Well, I understand, you might think there's a problem, but, you know, I, I know people, Susan, they can comment about the, um, transfer from the sewer fund. Yes, I can't find it anywhere. I've been through the treasurer's reports, I've been through the township boards. There is no transfer from the, the Capitol Reserve Fund, from the, from the sewer fund. So can somebody tell me when that transfer was made?
I will have to go back and check on that. It's transferred out there.
Well, Susan was the one who made the comment. Can Susan tell us?
That's very, very similar to what I'm creating when I was done.
Tell me, Ross.
When was the job, when was the job completed?
I don't know.
Why not?
Well, I don't.
You have anything else about it?
Well, Susan is the one who seems to know. She was given a lecture to, what?
Yes, it came out of the Capitol Reserve.
When?
For the sewers. Surely after the project was done.
Can you give me a year?
I, when was the project done? 2000, 2009, 2000, somewhere around there.
Well, I can't find your.
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't learned yet.
So I, I have to assume that the information we were just given is inaccurate.
No, you don't have to assume that at all.
Oh, that's what I'm.
I know, that's what you will assume, but that's not necessarily.
Will you produce a document that confirms what you said?
I do have it.
I have the documents, and they don't back up what I just said. Um, Mr. Drayer's correct. 1996 should have had the sewers in. 2006, you hadn't had, hadn't done in like 10 years. You didn't have it done. Back then, there was plenty of grant money for these people, dropped the ball.
You were supervisor in 2006.
You had Joe Nolan create a study, for whatever reason, you didn't do it.
Yes.
So, in essence, there was grant money back then, and they couldn't have their grant money to do the project. So I don't care how you cut, you were responsible back then for this demand, and to Mr. Diesel's point, for that reason, it is a special circumstance where you really should help these folks out. That's my opinion. Um, number three, as far as open spaces, I'll answer Dean's question.
No, I'm tired of the money.
$3 million, I think you let everybody else do it, aren't you?
I tried to stop.
Right, watch for that, that one, that can help you out. You guys expect, because I have, I have 3 million material. You guys expect, roughly $3 million of our money, buy an open space for a circle of people.
I disagree with that.
For a cer, don't even make that comment. You want to be as precious. We're like all in a circle of friends, okay? And basically, you've created retirement funds for a bunch of people, properties that we can't utilize, we can't go on, we can't enjoy, okay? And basically, you know, naming people's properties is not calling people out because it's their properties. Period. The brain.
Okay, none of this is pertinent to the motion. I mean, you can stop this right now.
All these people, what they have to talk, friends and horses, okay?
Not friends of yours, that's.
Basically, well, I don't think that's appropriate.
There's a lot of.
Non-harmless, yes.
Why can't we discuss that? Why don't we discuss the motion on the floor?
Basically, the point is, the point is, and now it's relative to this, is we use taxpayer money to benefit individuals.
Now, we benefited the township.
Can I finish with it? We, we benefited individuals, okay? Open space does not pay for itself, okay?
Now, I truly believe that.
Can I finish, please? If we use, like, look at Larry Smith's farm. $4 million go, I think, the township's take was, we gave him a million. Right now, by the way, Whole Foods is there, I hope you know.
They are not.
You said no.
No, they're not.
Whole Foods is there.
Whole Foods is not there.
They're not.
Okay, what's your reading, friends and Worcester news line? Basically, basically, if we had, if we had utilized that disfront and put a stony creek there, no children. Basically, basically, if we had, if we had utilized that property and put, like, Stony Creek there, no children, and you would have had tax revenue funded the school. There's an example of how you utilize them, on the wall. Okay? So there's a situation where it would be a path. You can build houses without kids. So that's how you utilize them. Now, when it gets to the ordinance, I'm looking at this ordinance, and I'm kind of concerned with these people because it looks like they have to bind Daniel and inspect their sewer system.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a concern.
You can talk about that when we have a public hearing next week.
I would, I would be surprised at what that's going to force when you all.
Thanks. Anyone else before I call the question? Seeing all those in the area, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, I have some motion to advertise the 2016 budget for the public inspection. So I hear a motion to approve the advertisement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the advertisement only of the 2016 draft budget.